I do.
The city council meeting will come to all of Tuesday, November 20, 2007. We have the invocation by Mr. Smith and the prayers by Mr. Fowler.
I am Father coming forward this afternoon. We want you to continue bless us and keep us and lead in God's in this world. Again, Lord, thank you for being so good. Thank you for being so kind. Thank you for walking into this day and thank God for my experience. I am Father, want to bless this meeting, give us some wisdom and knowledge to carry on this meeting the way that you see fit, and bless this Thanksgiving, our heavenly Father. Let us be thankful for what we have and bless the ones that are overseas that will not be with us on this Thanksgiving, our heavenly Father. You bless Max in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Prodigal agents.
To survive in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have roll call, Ms. Fields.
Mr. Marshall.
President.
Mr. Fowler.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Lawson.
Senator.
Mr. Silver.
President.
Mr. Silver.
President.
Mr. Smith.
President.
Mr. Hawes. Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fields. Before we go any further, I think the mayor has a proclamation that he would like to read.
We're gonna, we have a resolution from the council that mirrors this exactly, Mr. President. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor that we are going to send to the family of Julius Patrick. Whereas this week his families gather together for Thanksgiving, it is important that we remember and give thanks for the life of a man who passed away only a year ago and whose life's work has touched so many of us here in central Louisiana, Mayor Julius Patrick Jr. of Boise, Louisiana. Whereas the late Mayor Patrick was both an educator, educator and a public servant, a man who directly contributed to improving the lives of all of us in central Louisiana. And whereas Mayor Julius Patrick was a faithful and honorable servant to the town of Boise. And whereas Mayor Julius Patrick passed away on November 26, 2006, in a tragic accident. And whereas he as mayor of the town of Boise built a town hall and two new fire stations helped attract major industries such as Boise Cascade and received significant grants to improve drainage and sewage, we therefore, the mayor and the council declare November 18 through November 24, 2007, as Julius Patrick Week. And with that, we will present this to his family, and they've had some hardship, I think, maybe even since, they just had a tough time and a rough run. And so, we're all thankful in this area for all the things he did. If you recall, Mr. Hawes, we were together at the time of the inauguration, and we talked about him in the inaugural speech, and I think I aired and said that Ned was the longest-standing mayor, but there actually, David Butler and some others have served a long, long time, and he was certainly one of those folks. So, we appreciate everything he did. And Mr. Johnson talked to me earlier and wanted to do this, and I knew he had the support of the council, and we appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I think you want to pass the resolution.
Yes, a resolution to be presented to this council, the resolution of a head of Mayor Julius Patrick and of his years of exemplary service and to memorialize his ultimate passing. And also with that say, to present it to this council for this resolution, I would like for this council, and if we wanted to just please stand, I know we've already done the prayer, just to stand and give him a moment of silence.
Okay, need a motion. Motion by Mr. Fowler. Second by Mr. Marshall. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll follow that too. Relations. Before I go any further, we have a young man here who is the president of the Alexandria Youth Advisory Council, visiting with us to see me. He's also the new Mr. Boating, which is from the Delta Sigma Theta sorority. Would you like to stand and just state your name so everyone would know?
How y'all doing? President Hawes, City Council. I'm Justin Bees, who's the president of the Alexandria Youth Advisory Council, and the new Mr. Boating from the Delta Sigma Theta sorority, and I'm glad to have you. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to eat, a consent calendar.
Number five, Public Works, number six, Utilities.
Four, Public Safety.
Okay, move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we go down to F, ordinance for final adoption subject to public hearing.
Mr. President, item number 16 is delayed for two weeks. Number 17, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bids submitted for portable mobile column lifts for the fire department.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 18, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bids submitted for brass fittings and miscellaneous items for a six-month period.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 19, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the Alexandria Police Department to receive monies from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement for the Rapids Parish Dare Unit.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 20, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Crime Stoppers of Central Louisiana for the donation of a 2008 Ford Explorer.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 21, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with Alexandria and Mardi Gras Association for activities festivities for the public, public purpose of promoting Alexandria and enhancing the quality of family life.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 22, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 169-2007, authorizing the mayor to enter into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with Ash Sports Camp to make provisions for the city's youth meeting income guidelines as recommended by HUD to attend the sports camp held during the months of June and July.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 23, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Daniel T. Smith for planning services in the Planning and Economic Development Division.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 24, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Susan Patton for planning services for the city of Alexandria Planning Division.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Silver, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 25, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Belina Farms for the relocation of electric utility facilities necessary to accommodate the construction of Tennyson Oaks subdivision phases eight and nine.
Move. Second.
Move by Mrs. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 26, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Alexandria Weed and Seed Area Four Steering Committee.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 27, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Charlie Anderson to be the weed and seed program coordinator.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 28, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with the Rapids Symphony Orchestra for the production of an interdenominational prayer service recognizing the city's religious history.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 29, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending '07-'08 capital budget for McDonald Street and Drainage.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 30, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a first supplemental and amending local services agreement pertaining to adjudicated property.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 31 is delayed for two weeks. Number 32, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into residential lease with Marion French for the use of five parking spaces located behind 610 Murray Street in block 45 of the original plot.
Move.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
33, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing and appropriating funds for a local cost share to the Gulf of Mexico flood study.
Move.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Get close on that. [Laughter] I look a lot like you.
Item number 34 is delayed for two weeks. We go to number 35, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending '07-'08 capital budget for the Chatlin Lake Canal Study.
Move.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to G, committee.
Finance committee, Mr. Lawson.
Go ahead, go this one.
Public works, Mr. Silver. Yeah, right.
Introduction.
Introduction. It goes back to public works.
Okay, introduction goes back to public work. I'm ready, you need a second.
Do you have another one?
Okay.
Well, this is also a resolution that we discussed earlier, authorizing the city attorney and legal staff to begin acquisition work in a litigable stance necessary to acquire ownership of property for the city of Forsyth Boulevard Phase Two, project to improve preparation of access to donations and to prepare appropriation facilities remaining.
Move. Second. That is a resolution, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Legal committee, Mr. Smith.
And all this authorized the mayor into contract to sell and all that contract of several acres of fourth property to full assessment. And all this amended 2007-'08 capital budget fund, the purchase of property. This is, we're talking about the fund of purchase of property on Bunch of Avenue, Long Avenue, Monroe Street.
Move.
Number two.
Second.
And all this authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with Charles Cooper to purchase property.
Move. Second.
And all this authorized the mayor to enter into a contract to receive the lease with the Alexandria.
Yeah.
Port of product and test on.
Move. Second.
And all this authorized the mayor to run and even through and across the levee land of which the eight pipelines connected the fourth property in Petronine. Is this actual entry to an assignment?
Move.
That's what they got on my face. That's what they got on my face.
This is the first time you seen us.
You're right, but that's what they got on my face. A resolution authorized the Chamber of Commerce appointment of Charles H. Wing to the England Economic and Industrial Development Board of the Records.
Move.
This is a resolution.
That's a resolution. Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Yeah.
A resolution authorized the mayor appointment of permanent names to the England Economic and Industrial Development Board of the Records.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
A resolution authorized the mayor to accept a donation from the United Society of the United States to further the mission of apple freeener, improving the lives of dogs, cats, and animals. That was on the page.
I move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is that all, Mr. Smith?
That's enough.
Utility committee, Mr. Fowler. Community development, Mr. Marshall.
No report.
Personnel, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Public safety, Mr. Marshall.
Got one. Resolution authorizing the administration to file a declaratory suit concerning removal and demolition and relocation of watercraft in the Red River.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Any review, Mr. Fowler?
No report.
Economic development, Mr. Lawson.
One thing I'd like to, yeah, okay, I don't matter. We got two more meetings, and I know sometimes the last minute we pushing for things, but I'd like, you know, ask the administration to kind of get it down before the next holiday so we can make sure we get it in and get it out. And if there's anything special that we, you know, you may have, that may require something else, but hopefully we can get through the last two for the year. And, Ms. Jennings.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we're very excited to tell you that we've taken our first small step in implementing the goals under AFEET, our small business ordinance that you approved at the last meeting. You are now able to go to the city of Alexandria's website, citialexandria.la.com, and view a RFP, RFQ bid page. And once you click on it, it's in very visible sight on the homepage to the far left, once you click on that, you're going to go to a page that will list bids that you have approved, RFPs and RFQs. You can click on the particular item you're interested in and read the specifications, see the deadlines, and know about if there are any pre-mandatory bid conferences. So, we're pleased that this information is going to be more accessible to the citizens, and it is our, one of our first steps, but we think it is a very important one, and we want to make sure that the citizens are aware of it and know that they can use this tool. They will be able to print the specifications from that particular page. But we do want to encourage them to continue communicating with the purchasing department, with Mr. Despino, to make sure that they are, you know, aware of everything that they need to know.
What are we doing in addition to the website to expose, I know we're going to use the government access channel to reach our target market, I know we have two urban papers, but we have a growing population that we need to reach out to as well, the Hispanic population. What are we doing to maybe try to reach those markets? Do we have something that works to maybe reach?
Something specific planned? Let me understand your question. Do we have something specific planned to reach, you meaning Hispanic?
Minorities. Blacks, women.
Oh, sure. We're going to plan community meetings at our community centers and with various civic organizations, trade associations, so that we can speak with them. It would probably be a smaller scale version of the town hall meeting that we had. We'll continue to market the AFEET program. One of the things that we've learned that the last city ordinance did not produce any type of program or measurable results because, according to the city employees, they didn't get a response from the citizens about it, and we think it's probably because they did not know and have a clear understanding of why they should register and how it's going to be advantageous to them. When I left our committee meeting, I went upstairs and had a call from a native Alexandrian who was inquiring about the program, and one of her questions was, will there be a charge for registering? Because many of the other programs to register as a minority or a woman-owned business, there's a $200 to $300 fee. So, she was very pleased to know that there is not a cost for registering for our program, that she'll be able to register and have her name published in the directory. When we collect names of minority and women-owned businesses and it goes into a directory, that directory will also be placed on the website. That'll be one of the other things that you see coming up. And our purchasing agents within our departments that are making decisions about what vendors to use will have this directory of vendors they can choose from. So, they'll, it'll be easier for them to know who's available in the community for them to use. It'll also be available for any other company in the area that's looking for a supplier or looking for small businesses. They'll be able to go to our website and get a list of businesses in the community that are available. But we-
We won't be waiting on them to come to us. We're going to be proactive.
No. Exactly. We're going to be proactive and aggressive and go to them. Another thing, Mr. Lawson, you'll be excited about, we're working on is publishing a directory of products and services that the city purchased. Meaning by department, we're going to publish, once the budget is approved, and we'll start halfway now, exactly what we anticipate we're going to purchase. We can't guarantee them the purchase will still be made, but it'll give the citizens a better idea of exactly what type of products and services that the city of Alexandria is looking for.
Ms. Jennings.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible for you, well, I'm going to ask that you let each council member once a month give us a progress report as to how we're going with it. Again, I'm pro Alexandria, I'm prejudiced.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see businesses in Alexandria reap the benefits of this program.
AFEET, okay. Sure.
So, you can get us, you know, kind of-
That's possible. We'd be more than happy to provide you with that information.
Will there be any business set in to advertise in this information, trying to get out to minority publications?
Yes, that is a part of the ordinance, that we will extend ourselves to minority publications.
Now, why would you ask that?
He's probably just curious, but that is a part of it. It is a part of the AFEET ordinance, and we'll contact you. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to, to the mayor, you know, we have these different groups, and we have, you know, these different committees, I mean, out there, you know, different neighborhood groups and things like that. I'm just going to say it like the weed and seed, and I know we have expertise in helping, you know, some of these groups, and I wish they would take advantage of the personnel that we have that we can help them. I mean, they're going to have to realize that, you know, they just, that some of these different groups out there, they just serve, and, and they're going, they're going to have to ask for help. I mean, they need our help, because, you know, sometimes they, you know, like, you know, they miss the funding and this stuff, and we have people that are helping. And so, I mean, I think the best is wanting to get out to them to, you know, let the administration and whatever we need to go out there and help them, you know, to continue getting their funding, you know.
All right.
And just our, our own some funding, you know, that should have been, we should have been going off of it to. And we have people like Ms. Harris, we've got some other people out here that could help these different groups, you know, and that's what we need to do, because when they're not funded, then they come back and they want to blame you. And then we fall on the shelf, and we're not really known what we're supposed to do.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
I just wanted to thank the council for all of the help with Sugar House Road, and I wanted to tell the public what was going on very quickly. I know that all of you, especially with Charlie toward the end, I think the public, I'm glad we can say it on Channel Four, I think that Mr. Curtis was down there with me every time, and he fought hard, and all of you know that, he's been fighting for it. Senator Joe McPherson has been totally supportive of the project and doing everything he could as a member of the commission, but I think I have to give some special regard to Representative DeWitt, who at the end, I believe, made the final moves, and I know that many of you had talked to him, that makes these things happen. I told all of you and shared with you that we knew when we went down that first time that there was a debate going on with that body, that commission, that's political and how capital outlay is done and all, but we took the chance that throwing us out there would help. I know it was reported as though all of us did something wrong, and now we did, it's just not true. We went down there at the request of Mr. Kennedy. He asked us to come. Now, I know why, it was to, it was to have this debate, but the fact of the matter is, out of that, we ended up with Sugar House this year, and I think that that is a tremendous thing for the citizens, and I just want to thank all of you, talking to Representative DeWitt, and I know that we want to thank Senator McPherson, I'm going to write them all personally and write the paper about it, and to thank Israel Bo Curtis for all of his support for many years for this project.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Along that line, I think it's very appropriate, and I agree with you, it's very itself, and non-parochial for Representative DeWitt to go the extraordinary steps that he went through to help push this through along with Representative Curtis's district saying, and so, now, Senator, but I think it would be fitting for this body and administration to recognize our delegation that fought very, very hard for us these last several years who have reached their term limits, and also recognize those that are newly elected through a special ceremony or something of that nature we can do, but not be anything big, but I think it's only fitting, seeing in all the things we've gotten from LSU A to all the fruits of that labor that's shown out at England Airport, that we recognize them in some shape or in fashion in the several weeks.
We could do it at Crew Louisiana this year, we could do some things I think would be appropriate.
Anybody affiliated with the crew in here?
I think, I think you reminded me when you said that, Mr. Lawson, Bragg is here, he asked that we consider, and I didn't produce it, I don't know if it's appropriate now, but he wanted a resolution, it's no cost to the city, we're not paying anything this year for the crew, but they would like a resolution that this council is going to be behind as a sponsor so that they can put our emblem and everything on all the items, and so, if y'all would, if it's appropriate and you could entertain a resolution, we'll draft up the resolution after the fact, but if y'all wouldn't mind maybe moving.
So, move.
Second. All in favor?
If it is 71, keep it under 71, where is it?
This is no money for this.
No money for this.
You've got plenty of money yesterday.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You talked about maybe recognizing that, that-
I think we already have one.
Yeah, it is one.
Ma'am, Mr. President.
Yeah.
We plan on giving the economic development award this year, but as you know, last year we did Mr. Berry, Mr. Gavell for the unity award, and the Sugar House project could certainly bring together these congressional, these legislative people that you're talking about as a sort of, you know, a unity award, so.
It'd be a ceremonial thing handing over the-
Exactly.
That's right.
Exactly.
And Herbert, and from Boda Herbert and from Charlie to Chris.
Recognizing the past and the future and the bridge to our future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I guess that's it.